The June the 25th Regular Business Meeting of City Council, Mr. Hamp will lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. I'll remind those in attendance, if you wish to speak during Citizens Comment tonight, there's a sign up sheet in the back. The first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four o. Matters of City Council. I do have one thing here. We have a couple of plaques to hand out tonight to Mr. Freeman and to Mr. Marks for their service to the citizens of Waynesboro. Mr. Freeman, you're finishing up eight years, correct?
Correct.
There's your plaque, sir.
Thank you very much.
And there's a very nice picture there to remind you of all the good times. You pass that one down to Mr. Marks. Let me show you, it's a picture of all the council members. I'm sure they'll...
Thank you very much.
And I'd just like to say that in the last four years with you, Mr. Marks, and eight years with you, Mr. Freeman, it's been an absolute pleasure to serve with you and to be able to work along beside you and to work through the issues that we've had and even though we haven't always agreed, but we've always came back and were polite and professional about it. And I really appreciate your help and helping all of us on council for your time that you serve. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I have just a couple of comments, Mayor. On the occasion of my last meeting as a member of City Council, I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge to the citizens of Waynesboro the honor it's been to serve as one of your elected representatives on City Council. Contrary to what some may feel, it's not a thankless position, but it's rather an opportunity to learn about the workings of the city and to make some small contributions to it. I would be remiss if I didn't thank our mayor, the other members of council, our city manager, Mike Hamp, deputy city manager, Jim Shaw, Julia, our council clerk, and all the others in city administration for the privilege of working with you over the course of the last four years. Our citizens should take real comfort in the integrity, the dedication, and the competence of their city government and the hard work undertaken on their behalf. Waynesboro's been my home for most of my life, and while I will be residing across the mountain in Nelson County, Waynesboro will always be or have a place in my heart, and I will continue to be interested in its future welfare. I extend best wishes to Waynesboro, the City Council, including the new members who will take office on July 1st, and to our citizens. Thank you.
Yeah. I could easily echo what Mr. Marks said. We don't really realize as citizens how much work our staff does for our community, and we should really appreciate that. I know I do a lot more. I appreciate all my supporters over the years, and being on council has been the greatest, I guess, pleasure and gifts or responsibility I've had, being my home. I'm not leaving because I'm not on council. I'm here, and I extend our new members, Mr. Dr. Hosteller and Ms. Anderson, all the best. I had lunch with both of them a couple of times in meetings, and I think we're in good hands. I really do. So, anyway, good luck and thanks again.
One further thing, Mr. Mayor. I must acknowledge the attendance and the audience from several people that I think I know, familiar to me, and I wasn't prepared for them to be here tonight. So, anyway, thanks.
Anything else from matters of City Council?
Last thing. I would like to thank Mary Rose for putting up my schedule for eight years.
All right, we'll move on to number four, is to consider authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to serve beer on city-owned property in association with the Tour de Valley cycling event on September the 1st, 2018. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir. The Tour de Valley has become one of the feature events sponsored and organized by the Department of Parks and Recreation. The social gathering that occurs following the event includes beverage, alcohol, in this case, beer, and it will be confined to the pool area and confined to only those individuals who have registered and paid to participate in the event.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Any questions? If not, is there a motion to authorize?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four o. Item five is to consider approving an application from the Department of Parks and Rec to serve beer on city-owned property in association with the Totally 80's 8K race on August the 18th, 2018. Mr. Hamp?
So, this is a new event for the Department of Parks and Recreation and part of the Run the Valley race series, and similar to the preceding item, this is beverage, alcohol, beer, served at the conclusion of the event for those participants, and again confined to the pool area. This event is August 18th, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Is there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the application?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four o. Item six is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $464,536 of general fund unassigned fund balance for transfer to the facilities maintenance reserve. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you may recall in the period leading up to the recent bond issue to fund the renovation of Waynesboro High School, having passed two reimbursement resolutions, this allows the council to reimburse itself from bond proceeds for expenditures that occurred prior to the bond issue. The $464,536 at issue tonight was for the purchase of two properties on West Main Street that will facilitate the high school renovation project. You can anticipate at least one more reimbursement from expenditures that were prior to the bond issue, and these funds would be returned to your unassigned, from unassigned fund balance to facilities maintenance reserve.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Is there any questions of Mr. Shaw? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. It'll be considered at the next regular council meeting. Item seven is communications, correspondence, and calendar.
One quick item, sir. The organizational meeting will occur on July 2nd at 8:00 a.m. here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Number eight, Citizens Comment, period.
So, first speaker signed up is Ms. Nancy Wells.
If you'll give us your name and address, please, and observe the timer up here, please.
You got it. My name is Nancy Wells. I live at 512 Cherry Avenue. I'm here to talk about the chicken ordinance. Number one, it was such a shock to find out that an ordinance had showed up. None of us chicken owners were notified. Then again, none of us chicken owners have had to register with the city that we have them. In the ordinance, we can't blame everybody because there is an issue here and there, and animal control is supposed to deal with these issues. And I know somebody who spoke to Dee, and she has dealt with issues in the past, and they've been resolved, but suddenly, we're not doing that. I raised babies last year. I had three hens, and I got eggs and hatched them. When I became a parent, that five of mine were roosters, I got rid of them. I do have a rooster right now, and I didn't plan to keep him, but he just didn't mature and start crowing until he was seven months old. I mean, if you outlaw roosters, how am I supposed to get rid of a rooster? Getting rid of the first ones was hard enough. Are they all going to end up out at the shelter with a glut of roosters? I share eggs with my neighbors. I share berries with my neighbors. I mean, Terry has put a lot of stuff on Facebook, and he contradicts himself. On Facebook, he says that he knew whose, I woke with a rooster crow around 4:30-ish in the morning at the onset of cold. I shut the window, tried to get back to sleep. The next morning, the same thing, and because the owner had just advertised eggs for sale and had asked for help looking for a hen, I knew whose it was. In the News Leader article that was later that day, it says, "I didn't know where the roosters were coming from." It's kind of like having a dog bark in the middle of the night. So, he's contradicting himself, and I do notice that he's not here tonight. And on his Facebook page, he also put that he received a phone call from a woman who said that she doesn't think roosters in the city is a good idea, and that she had spoken to many of her friends who agreed with her. And I kind of feel like she should be able to speak for herself, but not for anybody she spoke to on the phone, because we could all say we spoke to people who support it, people who don't want them. So, I think that maybe a lot more needs to go into this, and while I still have time left, Chrissy, both, anyway, she asked me to pass on that she's fine with the quantity restriction of rooster ban in her current flock recovered until her rooster's natural death under her grandfather clause. So, there we go, and she's willing to undergo an inspection and whatever to ensure the happiness and health of her chickens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Leroy Wells.
And I might just want to give a heads up to the audience, as you very well know from tonight, two of these council people won't be here when we look at this ordinance in several months, and Mr. Short's not here tonight to hear your comments. So, if you'd like to go through them tonight, that's great, or you could come back probably when the new council is set, the mayor's, new mayor will be here, and we can discuss that. Go ahead, Mr. Wells.
Leroy Wells, 512 Cherry Avenue. Obviously, you folks have ruffled some feathers, to say the least. Again, we live on Cherry Avenue. Our neighbors on both sides of us have chickens. We take care of them. We make sure they're fed, they're watered, we clean, and make sure the coops are in great We have bigger things to worry about in Waynesboro than chickens. Waynesboro has had chickens since the turn of the century, the 1900s. Chickens will always be here. We don't raise chickens to produce chickens or produce meat. We get the chickens, and we have our eggs. We share them with our neighbors. We share them because they're good for you. We have a lot of bigger things to worry about. We've got a roundabout that we want to put in. I think we're wasting a bunch of money on engineering and a study to do a roundabout. Put a traffic light back up there. Let's get on with business. We can spend a lot less money by putting that back up there. We will be back at the next council meeting. Not just myself, my wife, probably other chicken owners will also be back. We wanted to make sure that you are noticed, that we are objecting to the ordinance, and we'd like to be involved. Contact us. Let us know which the ordinance is going to be. Work with us, and we'll be happy to put our two cents in. Whether you take it or not, we'll be happy to work with each and every one of you on this ordinance. Don't draw something up that's just going to raise more problems for yourselves or for the council. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. or Ms. Bridge?
Back here. Can you ride up that way?
Yes, sir. Ms. Porter, you want to put the mic down?
You drop that and I have to before I talk. Yes, I'm Borough Bridge. I've lived here for 55 years on and off.
What's your address now, Mr. Bridge?
It's 1362 10th Street.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I just moved back here after a couple of years to take care of family problems, but I hear a lot of stuff that's unnecessary, like a lot of people, this chicken stuff is childish. Let it go on with, like I said, chickens, my granddaddy raised them down here on Market Street, pheasants and chickens. I mean, what the heck? And there's also therapy for chickens for me and cancer, for therapy to help people to get out and push themselves in life besides struggling and trying to make it, go get a dozen eggs. At least there's neighbors that would help. We don't have that in this town no more. I've seen that when I come back since December from this cancer treatment and everything else. I've tried, these organizations try to help me to get my power on, because I'm on oxygen and 14 pills in the morning, 17 at night, struggling to get this cancer done. Nobody wants to help out. I've been to Salvation Army, a couple people know, I've talked to them, about this help won't help people that is disabled and needs help. I mean, this town, we want to grow with love. That's what we want. Says fighting, a better piece of chicken, or whatever somebody's raising cane about, we need to help each other, as God asks us to do as a family. That's what makes the town. But what gets me, I'm disabled in this wheelchair, can't half walk because of my hip and all is gone. I tell you, me trying to get across the road in this wheelchair is unbelievable. They'd rather take a stick or hit you with that car than stop for five minutes to let you get across. I've never seen in my life, like I said, I've been here on and off for 15 years, and the last 10 years, we ain't bettering ourselves. We're just in a cage fighting each other for this and that. We've got to grow up and help each other as love as God asks us. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge.
David Geiger?
Give us your name and address, please. David Geiger, 701 Locust Avenue. First I have to say, you know, as you know, I've been on the Historical Commission, and this evening, I'm not here as a representative for the Historical Commission, but I do have an issue that I want to continue to bring in front of City Council. I have here an email I sent to Mr. Hamp and Mr. Jones two years ago in July, and it's regarding to the Plum House. We talked about step, the steps in the wall have been deteriorating for over two years. We have a sign up there, "Please use the back entrance." You know, I think it's about time that we look at that facility. The city owns it. They touted it as a historical property, the Tourism Board does, and it's deteriorating. The steps, as I said, don't work. They're in bad condition. We still have ground logs underneath the building. I think they need to be addressed. Something needs to be done before they undermine the foundation. A new problem has developed, that heating and air conditioning units do not work in the Plum House. And what's happening is if you don't do maintenance and don't do repairs, you're going to have problems down the line. Without the air conditioning, artifacts within the Plum House are deteriorating because of the high humidity and lack of moisture control through the AC. The heating barely keeps it 50 degrees in the wintertime. I think this all needs to be addressed at some point. As I said, if you let things go, something's going to happen, and you're going to have a bigger problem down the road. I've been promised through, you know, Mr. Jones said we had an engineer was going to come up with a plan for the steps in the wall. That was two years ago. Nothing's been done. Now, I understand there's other priorities in this world, and, but I continue to see a lack of, you know, working at those facilities. And now I just have one more thing to say, you know, which is a new item. I've been involved with the Red Brick House Committee for several years. The committee has, wants to install a fence in front of the cemetery. They've let the city staff know that they would match funds if the funding came through from the city, and they would try to match funds so that a new fence could be installed. No quotes, no movement, nothing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Laurie Grabinski?
You'll give us your name and address, please.
I'm Laurie Grabinski. I live at 644 Walnut. I have a few, I'm here for the chicken ordinance also. I would appreciate to be informed when the next one does come up. I want to...
I can't understand you, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. It's, when I first got my chickens, I read the ordinances, I followed the rules, I asked my neighbors. Apparently, two out of the 18 neighbors recently, I found out, are not happy with my roosters. Had they said something in the beginning, I wouldn't have gotten them. It's very important to me to have a neighborly neighborhood. We all have block parties at the end of our block. We have a good time, we talk. I've asked both my neighbors, I have a few that have emailed and a few that are here to support me, and my thing is, yes, I probably have the most chickens in Waynesboro. I do sell my eggs off the porch. I can give them away, it doesn't matter to me. I have therapy chickens that go to group homes and old folks' homes. They're my pets. I provide eggs for the preschools and the kindergartens to hatch in the spring. I provide free chickens and raise them for the 4-H kids. To me, that's community. That's helping the community to grow. And unfortunately, Terry Scott can't handle my roo, Terry Short can't handle my rooster that, and he lives two and a half blocks away, crowing in the morning. So, I really feel that it should be grandfathered until our chickens pass. They have a lifespan of three to four years, and all of mine, I've had almost five years now. And it would be devastating to me if I had to get rid of them. I have one of the biggest lots in the neighborhood. I have almost a little over an acre. It's fenced in with seven and a half foot fence. Every problem that I've ever had, I've taken care of and resolved, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. You'll give us your name and address, please.
Kathy Johnson, 635 Chestnut Avenue. I am one of three of the closest neighbors to Laurie Grabowski. My house is directly behind hers. There are two houses to the left, one on either side. If I have my windows open and I listen carefully, I can hear the chickens and I can hear the roosters. They don't bother me. They were there when I bought that house. The realtor at the time said, "I'm not sure they're supposed to be there." I said, "Don't worry about it. I consider that a selling point." It's one of the reasons I bought my house was there were chickens there. I also have chickens to the right of me. I like the chickens. If we were to take a decibel meter, I don't know what that is exactly, except I know it reads the volume, and put that against the dog two houses down that barks at night and the chickens, and the new neighbors that I have across the street that apparently are operating some sort of shade tree mechanic and rev the engines up on Sunday mornings and other times of the day, I'm betting that those chickens are a lot less noisy and certainly bring to me a great deal of joy and pleasure. I'm like Laurie. I'm out there talking to the chickens. I'm not too bright. They don't talk back. They don't cause me any problems. I like the chickens. At the very least, I would think the City Council would grandfather them, but I would hope that we would have more important things to do in the city of Waynesboro than worry about a few chickens that provide eggs and pleasure for a lot of people in this community. That's all I have to say, but I am, I will be back. Thank you.
So, I'm going to flip the next two. Benny Higgs?
My name's Benny Higgs. I live at 350 South Linden Avenue. I have a small flock of hens. They stay self-contained. I talk all the time to my neighbors, nobody cares. Matter of fact, nobody'd know probably if I hadn't gone and talked about it before I got them. I don't have a rooster. I don't sell eggs, and to throw everybody under the same blanket on this, to me, is wrong. I look at a rooster no different than a barking dog. If my neighbor's got a barking dog and I have an issue, I go to talk to my neighbor about it. If I don't get satisfied, then we go somewhere from there, but I don't understand why we can't handle this on an individual basis. I would venture to guess that de-priced animal control gets 10 to 50 times... I would venture to guess that de-priced animal control gets 10 to 50 times as many calls about dogs and cats as she does about chickens, and I think that speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Lacy?
I know it's going to be about chickens. My name is John Lacy. I live at 800 South Ellison Lane here in Waynesboro, and I have been a resident of Waynesboro and of Wardee for over 40 years, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Alvin B. Pete Marks for his long and dedicated service to the City Council and to the residents of Waynesboro. And although I wish his replacement, his successor, all the best, we will certainly miss Mr. Marks. And Waynesboro's loss is Nelson County's gain. I would also like to say, I would like to go on record, I would support, and I think many, many, if not all, of the residents of Waynesboro would support a statue or at least a portrait for this chamber of Mr. Marks. He already has a plaque. Perhaps we could name the roundabout after him. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. That is. And on that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
We are adjourned.